I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is a special meeting, we'll jump right to approval of the agenda.
Second.
The motion in second to approve the agenda is presented on paper by saying nine.
Aye.
Both same time. Carries, first order business, discussion on bid opening held November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, now turn it over to Kim.
All right. Since you guys all know how the results were. I guess, uh, we were looking to get a six forty-four from John, and we'll do the loaders first. The six forty-four from John did appear, but they've been a six twenty-four, I've heard crunching all the numbers with cats nine thirty-eight and their six twenty-four, they are pretty comparable as far as ticket weights and and that type of thing, so that height and all that, so. One of the specs was the weight for the the total machine weight, and if they add their, our Pemberton hitch, which we spec down there, then they do meet the weight for otherwise. In their brochure, it didn't meet the weight. So basically, that's it for, as far as comparison, I think we're pretty close to the same. Uh, I don't know, maybe we want to hear from both the citizens? Do, do they have the same?
We're not trading anything?
No, we're people who order. Eventually, maybe yours, not we may.
I guess one more can we do?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Always. Horsepower specs, everything are comparable, or?
Yep, everybody, not a horsepower respect. They are pretty close to the same weight. The brochure that I was working with was a little confusing for John here, but.
Yeah, so, uh, sorry Kevin, if you don't mind, uh, so the brochure I gave Kevin was just a straight pin-on bucket, so if you look at our our coupler and three point two five yard bucket, which is what Caterpillar has specced out for their weight and theirs, we exceed the weight that is required for the bid as well. And I have that brochure with me, if you guys want, we'll try to kind of show you the difference. So that's, like I said, the way Kevin has, the first brochure he got was just a straight pin-on bucket. This other brochure, that's just a six twenty-four P, it shows the weight with the coupler and bucket, and that's thirty-six thousand one hundred seventy pounds.
Dustin, right?
Yes, yeah.
I had a question.
Yep.
So we asked for the six forty-four, what was the reason behind why it was a six twenty-four?
Uh, well, I think you, he said he would, he planned on bidding a six forty-four when we very first talked about it, but he bid a six twenty-four size machine, well. I, if I bid a six forty-four, I'm gonna spec myself out and be way higher than Caterpillar because it's a way bigger machine than the nine thirty-eight.
Okay, just.
So that's, that's the main reason why I didn't do it, because a six twenty-four was the machine specced out, and I would have bid myself out, bidding a six forty-four size against the nine thirty-eight.
Okay.
Over the years, the six forty-four has considerably grown in size. I, I print out the specs for the one that County currently owns a six forty-four G, it's a ninety-five model, and the specs are considerable. Could have brought the same as what you just did now, so, but the size of the six forty-four is actually gone a lot of the years. It's become a two hundred and fifty horsepower, forty-one thousand pound machine. Sometimes the model numbers can be confusing.
These are both five yard, or?
This one is a three point three four, yeah. And that's the bucket I was specced out with the machine, so.
Okay. Thoughts, additional questions?
Um, Kevin, mother, you wanna say anything, or?
No, I guess we, uh, met a hundred percent of the specs, actually the order that we have our standard features are exceeding specifications on the nine thirty, nine thirty-eight M, so. No, I guess, for what's on the specs and what Kevin asked for, we met a hundred percent.
We have too.
No, we're gonna sit here and bash about those specs all day, or?
And I, I just want everybody to be informed, and that's all we came here for, and we're not, not here to argue and pick at anything, we just want everybody to be informed, that's, that's the main goal.
Okay, I guess, any further questions from the commission?
Kevin, what's the, the bucket on here, that's considered three point three quarters on two?
Yep.
I guess one question, a couple of questions, I did that for REO, I should have asked this earlier, but I did it though. The spec asks for, uh, when we need a repair, the mileage due from the repair site is free?
Yep.
Did you put that here?
Yep.
Okay, and then the other question was, uh, the spec said for warranty, total machine warranty, which covers hydraulic, oh, this is everything?
It's all comprehensive, yep, full, full bumper to bumper warranty.
And you indicated that the only way that that M six twenty-four will meet the weight specifications is to include the quicker catch hitch? Right, is that correct?
But, like I said, if I, if you don't mind me adding, that's exactly what it's specced out in the cap brochures with a future coupler and a bucket. So if you like a R J R B coupler and bucket, we exceed weight, so if we're comparing apples to apples, we're right there too. That's the biggest thing is, I got the brochure here, I'm gonna give to you guys the warranty. Mr. Eagle, what's that?
So, and to defend myself, the only brochure I had was, did not include the coupler. And the brochure that they included with their spec was the brochure on, what their bid, what their.
Correct.
Was their bid, not their spec.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that is correct. So this, this is just a straight six twenty-four P motor. And the one I gave Kevin was all the motors, the five twenty-four, five forty-four, they're all.
I can verify, what are you saying is true?
Yeah, so I did give him just the one, I didn't realize it only had a straight pin-on bucket weight, it did have what which I highlighted right here, thirty-six, three sixty-five with a three, three point two five yard bucket and a coupler on the machine.
Uh, show the weights to.
And then, yeah, this is just the comparison we got off the catalog site between the High Lift and, uh, High Lift and John Deere with the quick cash on. Kevin, are both loaders available, relatively?
So delivery date was within a month. Cat was a month longer, but only ones that are REO is June twenty-third and Butler was July on twenty-three. Warranty was the same. Uh, now the mileage, which was huge, it's huge for me, the mileage due was from the repair site, they're the same?
The loader we have now, that's what you, when you bought it?
Uh, no, it was a two years old, it's a ninety-five, six forty-four, and it was two years old. Like I said, I don't want to sit here and bash over this weight thing, but that brochure showing us after the bids.
That, that was the concern, uh, when the bids were open, that John Deere was underweight. So that, that's where the whole, that's where the spec thing started.
Oh, really?
And then this, this was presented to us after, yesterday in Kevin's office, we received this other information saying it doesn't need weight.
Or are you?
I did not.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, right, but I, first time I saw it was yesterday in Kevin's office. Yeah, I didn't realize that the first brochure I'd given Kevin didn't have the coupler and the bucket weight, that I didn't realize, I didn't go into more detail on that, so. But that's just kind of the back story on the whole spec issue.
Kevin, could you give us a rough idea of how much you think it would put on a year, on a load like this?
Yeah, it's a lot, maybe two hundred at the most, I'm larger. So we plan to have this machine for twenty-five years, I mean, we have a five-year warranty.
Right.
Hundred percent warranty, but we'll never wear it out, basically. That's why I, that was my concern, I get myself too small, because twenty-five years from now, we know it's that takes, in the way industry grows and.
Over the last few years, with that bridge in up there and across the pool, by your place, Adam, or that park in you, you know, when you use a lower bend, you're, you're using it a lot more.
Well, yes, yeah, when we do our, especially when we haul our chips and stuff, and things too lower than.
Yeah.
With this one, we'll have three, like a backup or something, but we might eventually get rid of the third one, we don't know, but now we will have three. Seems like you never have enough loaders.
No.
Maybe one over here, and one over here, and, you know, that type of thing.
What'd you have, what'd you did, Kevin, for?
I bought you the three hundred thousand for a loader, and just so you know, I bought you a hundred thousand for a skid steer. So the total of the two is four hundred.
Okay, one more question.
We're happy with the John Deere we have now, I think John Deere makes a good loader. No problem with the service, no problem with the parts. My just, my whole issue is I did probably get something too small, and as I look at the numbers on these, both of these machines are pretty comparable.
Okay, further questions? Cricket. If not, we have, we have an action, we have, we have something we'd like to do.
This is just on a loader today, or are we doing the, everything?
Everything today.
The background on that is the, the bid for the John Deere loader is only good until the thirtieth.
Or. For a state paid.
And it's not that way for the skids steer, but a lot of us are here.
So your bid just tomorrow, then?
And delivery gate.
But you, you can read that kind of thing, if you want, I mean, I don't know.
And delivery gate still look bad June and July?
Yep.
So, so seven months out.
It's written right in the.
No.
Sounds like there was some discrepancy in the, you know, when the bids came in, I guess is what I should say, you know, and.
Okay?
I ran both loaders, as far as them being the same, they're similar. Besides one being yellow and one being. It's hard to compare apples to apples, you know, some have a little bit nicer features, but then the other one, you know, if you're saying it's you could sit here and argue it all day long.
I can't make a motion, so. We're looking at you guys.
What do you want, Kevin?
We would be happy with either one, of course, we would like to have a cap, but we, we would be happy with either one, John Deere makes an excellent loader, the resale is great. So, so what we're doing the loader, what about this skid steer, you want to do that at the same time, what's your thought on that? Yeah, I looked at those numbers too, I think we can back on that too, I think John Deere, their bid is reasonable. Machine is fine.
What do you have now, you have any?
We have nineteen, or two thousand five.
That's three hundred.
Bobcat.
Bobcat.
Rubber tire, and this will be a track.
This is gonna be track?
Yep.
And you're keeping the rubber tire?
Yes, absolutely, we need both, actually.
Okay. And what was the timeframe on the skid steer?
You guys, you say the delivery gate time on that idea?
Sorry, uh, I believe, I believe that was March, uh, February.
April twenty-three.
April.
What's, what's the leading item?
I think it was like November, November.
Again, we would put that to work in June, but if it wasn't here, we would have to print some from Sunday. Same spec, uh, mileage, it's only a three-year warranty on this skid steer.
Two.
A two-year warranty on this skid steer.
For both?
For all three, yeah, two there's.
All, all the bidders.
All the bidders?
And then that, yeah, mileage, all that stuff.
Mileage is on there.
I guess delivery date wasn't made first, one, three?
It's.
Okay? Were the questions? It's quiet.
I'm gonna make the motion to accept the, what was bid on the John Deere, uh, payload? I guess I don't know enough research on the the skid steers to go to a low price. Other than that, I mean, as far as the John Deere, the loaders operating both of them, I have no issue, I would make the motion to.
Okay.
Do it on that, but I'd like to research the other items, I know you probably want an answer to that.
Right, um.
Bid originally could six, or thirty days, how does, if we wait till the sixth, how does that affect your delivery date?
Would be, would be good still.
Or the same machine.
Exactly. Between, yeah, truly, between.
Machines, I mean, the, the features, uh, the things we ask for, on the two, leading edge and REO are exactly the same.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, if it meets, if it meets spec to the bid spec, apples to apples, then a little bit, little bit. The only, the only place we have a little bit of leeway is, we don't get to choose what we want to buy, but we do have leeway when it comes to local versus further away, if it's different delivery dates, or we've done that on vehicles many times, where it might cost an extra fifteen hundred bucks locally, but it's gonna cost us fifteen hundred bucks to go pick the doggone thing up, so we buy local.
So does Dale work on the skid steer loader too?
Yep.
Yep, so he was right next to the bottom, right down there, I'd be able to deal with him.
I'll second you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll deal with the motion separately then, so we have a motion in a second then, right now, to accept the low bid for the payload. Okay, and we'll just deal with them separately, further discussion on the bid, uh, around the motion, excuse me, to accept the low bid for the payload from REO.
He's hurting. Twice, I mean, it's such a difference in price. You have an engineer sitting here talking.
That's okay.
Very careful. Wayne says. Such a difference in price, maybe you wouldn't.
Pretty much an elevator.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that we have some agreement, so, uh, we'll, we'll call it then, please. We go over there.
Isa?
Aye.
Rip?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, then on to the compact loader. Thoughts? Uh, I mean, like they said, you could, you could push it a meeting if you would like, obviously Kevin wants to get it ordered as quick as possible to get it to queue.
I'd make a motion to buy the John Deere three 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 G from Leading Edge, local.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second then, to accept E-bid from Leading Edge equipment for the John Deere three thirty-three G. Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion on that motion.
The only issue that I have would be the timing. You know, if you have a November next year.
I checked, he checked, May one.
May, okay.
Then we're okay within that parameter in terms of buying local versus. We're good, you're good there, Brad? Yeah, he's, he'll have it May first, and, and if we can keep the business local, we like to keep it local.
Yeah. All this warranty and stuff, this weird, close to with all that, same?
Yes.
Mileage, all that, with the leading edge.
One question I might have there was, uh, would you guys sub the work out to REO, or would you do the work yourself, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just curious at all.
Skid steer, you could hold things else.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys selling up skid steers there?
Because there's so many electrical switches on there.
That's it. Something's gonna go wrong at some point, that's what Kevin was saying. Doesn't matter if it's newer or older, it's got electrical, something's gonna go wrong. Okay, we have a motion in a second then, to accept the bid from Leading Edge, uh, for the three thirty, John Deere three thirty-three G for ninety-four five, eighty-seven sixty-eight, for the discussion. Very numb, we'll, we'll call this one as well, please.
Rip?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Isa?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you Kevin, and thank you for everyone that came and gave us information, we appreciate it greatly.
We appreciate you after.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and clear out, they don't want you to have to sit here and listen to us talk about contract for deeds. Because I know what to say. Thank you. Yeah, thank you Kevin, appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to our second, and kind of last thing on the agenda, uh, just a little bit of background, and then I'll let Paul take over. Um, as part of the foreclosure sale that occurred in our last meeting, one of the options under the rules for the sale is to, uh, do a contract for deed on the property that is, is acquired on that date, the foreclosure sale, and it's over five years, correct? Ten years, ten years, I'm sorry, ten years. Uh, we have, uh, one of the buyers would like to do a contract for deed, so to do the ten years on the contract. So that is why, since that's never been used before, we're gonna bring it before the board to approve that contract for deed, since it's different from the standard contract, essentially. Uh, oh, anything you'd like to add, did I explain it somewhat okay?
That, yeah, so Adam's right, um, so under the code for tax foreclosure sales, you can either buy in cash, or you can buy on contract for deed. Um, like Adam said, there's not a lot of information out there, as far as we know, this hasn't happened in Ramsey County before. We were able to get our hands on some draft contracts from Cass County, who has some more experience with this. There are two properties in play here, so we're gonna start with, um, going through the first contract for deed. The legal description should say lot eight, that's the one I want to start with.
Okay.
Okay, as you can see, it clearly says draft on there. Um, so as a term of this contract for deed at the county commission, you get to set the interest rate. By statute, you're capped at twelve percent, okay? And there's some discussion about which law applies. Because this is a contract for deed on a tax foreclosure sale, the specific trumps the general, so other parts of the code might say you can't go above, you know, whatever. This specifically gives you the ability to go up to twelve percent if you want, you don't have to. Um, so you are aware, the published prime rate from the Bank of North Dakota as of November third is seven percent. So that kind of gives you an idea of where the window is. Um, we do have to make a few small changes, under the legal description, we need to add a sentence that says description was obtained from a previously recorded instrument, that's a requirement we have to add. And then on the second, um, contract, Commissioner Desa caught a typo, so he'll fix that. So I'm gonna open it up to questions, what kind of questions do you have? So both of these, you want ten years?
Yeah, so there's, um, am I free to?
Yeah, of course, you're, you're the buyer, correct?
Yeah, right, right, so as a threshold matter, um, there was a, there was going to be an issue on the sixteenth, but I found out on the sixteenth for the first time that the contract for deed was not prepared, nor ready, as you just mentioned. Um, further, now we're trying to clean up on aisle three, what should have been done before the sale, so a, a number of issues have come to play. Despite the fact that the contract for deed is well outside of the bounds, that is a whole other issue. But there's ninety-two, you, you mentioned Cass County, Cass County's never done one, that's on record.
This is where the forms from Mr. Hubbard.
I'm sorry?
That's where the form came from, Mr. Hubbard.
No, I'm good, did you want to go ahead?
I'm just telling you.
Okay, so, yeah, and I was like, so Cass County has never done a contract for deed for a tax sale, are you aware of that?
You're gonna go to me?
No, I'm good, oh.
Well, I know that different counties in North Dakota have done them.
They have?
Yes, because through the treasurer's office, I have seen those.
Exactly, and none of them. So there, so there's a statute, the same statute, the specific statute, calls for the contract for deed to come from, or to be prescribed from the tax commission. So before I went to any of the sales in North Dakota, I contacted Linda at the tax commission. She told me she didn't have anything of the sort, so then I was to rely on Indra to see what other counties have done. So they've got a one-page, not teepy, contract that I was prepared to sign when I got. contract that I was prepared to sign when I got here that wasn't ready. Further, there was no interest prescribed, which should have been done before that. Since then, I've found out that, or actually I knew than I do, but the people bidding are not even qualified bidders. The only qualified person to bid on the property, the way it was done here, different from other counties that I was at during, earlier in the day, is that you have to be qualified to bid. We don't even know who run that price up on me. Because nobody signed a tax note. So I don't know if I'm, is everybody following my, my? So you have to be qualified to bid on the property, right? So the way every other county does it is before you get there, you sign in, you sign the tax note, you fill your ID, you prove who you are and you swear under oath that you do not own North Dakota taxes, or at least in the county or state. Then they give you a bidder number and you bid. This particular one, it was a free-for-all. Who knows who was bidding unless there's, and I verified this morning with Candy, do we have a list of the bidders? And no, there isn't because that oath wasn't signed until the purchase, which is when, now I came prepared with it, but I haven't been free to.
Hold it, sir. I mean, you're throwing us under the rug because how we handled it. We've only handled it here that way for the twelve years I've been on this commission. You wanted a contract for deed? For one thing, I won't go along with one for six thousand dollars. I won't. Forty-six, I might consider, but I'm probably not gonna consider it now. I don't need to get reamed out by you.
Okay, I don't understand your house.
Maybe I got up on the wrong side of the bed.
Maybe.
But the way we've done this for the twelve years I've sat here and this went fine. We've never had any problem whatsoever. The question is who bid? Who was in the room bidding? Don't you ever been to an auction?
That's all I do.
I've been at auctions where there's a thousand bidders. Who the hell do you know who's bidding?
You have to sign in, that's how.
I've been to auctions where you didn't have to have a number.
Well, I was too, I was the one on the sixteenth here. What I'm telling you is, you can argue with me all you want, you can't argue with the statute. The statute governs, you don't govern, the statute does. The statute says specifically how the sale must be conducted. I didn't spend months and months of research deciding if North Dakota was the place I wanna come conduct business. You haven't, nobody in this room has. Right? Okay, I have. So you can either yell at me and try and degrade me, or you can listen to what the code says. But two things are gonna happen here. You were supposed to give me a contract for deed the day I paid the down payment and you didn't. You were, you were supposed to have voted on the interest rate before the sale, not after. I didn't do that to you, you did.
Sir, I would, I would just, I understand you're frustrated.
No, I, I wasn't frustrated till I just got degraded by one of your commissioners.
But, but, but he's frustrated because he feels as though he's being attacked. So let's just all be, let's calm down, okay? Let's have a discussion about this. You're saying that we did it incorrectly. Okay, I'll, I'll take your word for it. But my question then would be is, how do you, how do you think we should fix it?
Well, how it's going to be, it, it, I, two things. They sent me a draft with all of these conditions that I am never going to agree to anyway. So that's number one. But the, the commission needs to set the interest rate before you have an auction, okay?
Well, that didn't happen, so they didn't have an auction yet.
Well, and so here, here's what does happen. So I have this beautiful one-hour-long conversation that Candy and I and the commissioner here have recorded when I paid to make sure everything was documented. Cause I do business in small towns. I was told that it was going to be the price divided by ten equal installments and put on the bottom of the deed. Further, if you guys can't tell me who the bidder is that bid me up to forty-six grand when every other county, almost, not exclusively, but most other counties, I buy these properties for minimum. The fact that a person could come in here and run me up and, and there's no record of it, could have been the owner of the property that gets additional proceeds.
Could have been, I hope.
It wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It wasn't.
We all know the individual that was bidding, sir.
Okay.
I could reverse this. He's, he's a local individual that buys properties as such and tries to fix them.
And not to say the individual ran you up, but I could reverse this role. Granted, you got the bid, right? Who's to say you didn't come to town and run him up?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I'm gonna call it a bidder then.
How, you didn't sign it here?
I did, I brought my oath with me. It's not a threat.
But we didn't sign it, we didn't see it, we didn't ask for it. You know what I'm saying?
No, I, I, just, just so you know.
Like, my question, I guess, would be is, so do you wanna buy the property for the cash that you paid for it? Or do you want to just let the property go?
So here, here's the other provision. So here, here's what I am proposing. So the interest in the, the, the interest that the county should have in the properties is getting the tax paid. That's it. We've, we've now clouded it with, and I know nobody did it on purpose, but the fact that it was clouded is, is a fact. And so there's case law that we've looked at that determines that if we, if the, if the parcel isn't sold at auction as it should have been the sixteenth, then anybody could come in and buy it. This is why I have been in contact with Bo and Candy and trying to rectify this because I already knew the case law because I didn't have a contract in my hand. Anybody could have walked through that door and North Dakota Supreme Court precedent says, if the deal ain't done and the county still holds a tax title, someone else can come buy it. So I've been working my tail off from Arizona to come up here or to get this thing rectified.
They write the check and we can accept that.
Yep. Well, I'm not your legal counsel, but, so what I propose is this, because of everything, I'll write you a check for the minimum tax on both properties.
For these two?
Correct.
For the minimum?
Correct.
So I have a, I have a question for you, Mr. Hubbard, and I'm gonna try and be as respectful as possible. You are saying you have researched the code, you're saying you've researched the law. Do you have specific citations that you can provide to me? Because I'm looking at fifty-seven twenty-eight fifteen, which is the annual sale at auction, sale price and terms of payment.
Correct.
And that is how this contract was drafted. Okay? There's nothing in here that says the interest need to be set before. There's nothing in here.
You're, you're gonna need to go to case law to find the, the, all of that, but, um, I would, I would assume it's anywhere in common law that you're not going to agree to a contract that doesn't exist.
Correct.
The onus was on the county to provide me once I, Dr. Bershardin will be very instructive for all of this.
Okay, Dr. versus Sheridan?
D O C K T E R.
Okay.
Bershardin County. In that case, it's Supreme Court precedent to this day, it's a nineteen forty-three case. There's cases regarding the tax sales are scant. I presume the reason is they're pretty straightforward and they, and like you guys mentioned, it has been. However, the fact that things have been done a certain way doesn't mean that that's the way they should have been done.
Okay, so let, let me ask you another question. What statute of, what statute specifically says qualified bidders? Where, where are you drawing that from?
It's right there in, it's in fifty-eight twenty-seven fifteen subsection one.
Okay. Let's look at it together. Each parcel of land must be sold at auction to the highest qualified bidder for no less than the minimum sale price as fixed before the sale. The sale may be made either for cash or one-fourth of the purchase price in cash and the balance is equal installment, equal annual installments over a period of not more than ten years. The purchaser may pay any or all annual installments with interest before the agreed date, due date of the installment. Okay, that's what it says. So where does it say that they have to be qualified and takes a tax note?
It's, it's, it's in the very first sentence.
It says qualified bidder.
Qualified bidder, yes.
Okay. But that doesn't imply a tax note.
You, to be a qualified bidder, you have to sign it out.
So as, as far as I see it, you, you can say that we have done our auction wrong. I mean, that's certainly, you can say that. The statute says that the contract must be in a form prescribed by the state tax commissioner, okay? So we can send our contract to the state tax commissioner and do it that way. But it also gives the county the right to cancel the contract by resolution and notice of default to the purchaser.
Correct.
So we can cancel it. Right?
Upon default, yes.
By resolution and due notice upon default by the purchaser. So if you default.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? We can, we can cancel it. So what you're telling us, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that you are not going to sign the contract for deed that we've offered you.
The contract for, well, first of all, you haven't, you've offered me a draft, number one.
Yep.
Number two, what I'm telling you is I'm coming in to purchase the properties cash because they didn't sell at the sale. That's in fifty-seven twenty-eight seventeen, if you want to fur, go further down.
Okay, sales between annual sales and appraisal, that's the section you're talking about? Okay?
I think it's section two of that.
Notwithstanding the provisions of this section or any other provisions of law, any property acquired by the county which is subject to a special assessment lien for improvements made by a city, may be sold to that city for cash at any price agreed upon by the Board of County Commissioners and the governing body of the city. Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, it's in subsection two. It's, it's in number one, it's in all of that language on number one. So, so I, I just, I, I wanna interject. So the, the county's interest.
We have a tax deed.
Is fulfilled upon payment of taxes. All of the taxes. Okay? It's, it's not fair to me to be ran up by somebody that isn't qualified bidder.
To be fair though, Mr. Hubbard, you didn't have to bid on the property.
No, I came here to do it.
You chose to bid on it.
But I opened the bid.
Correct.
On both properties.
And somebody else bid as well?
Somebody that we know is not qualified.
How do you know he's not qualified?
Because there was a tax note signed before the sale. I, I brought my tax note.
Yeah, but simply because you brought it doesn't mean you presented it. And if you didn't present it and nobody else presented it, how do we, how can we take your word that you signed it? We can't, it's conjecture.
It's notarized. And I use it at every other sale that I went to prior to. So I'm not sure why the, we're having an issue anyway because the money that we're talking about, I'm offering you to give the county all of their money. The, the money that we're talking about for the contract isn't your money.
Correct, we, we understand that. The, the question I have is the legality of can we do that?
Well.
And, and that, yeah, that comes down, you're not, you're not incorrect, that comes down to case law, that comes down to a lot of stuff. And to me, I think we, we have to allow the state's attorney still some time to then work with you to figure out that case law to make sure that this commission is doing things correctly.
Well, and here's the other thing, so, and I can appreciate that. And just so you know, I have made a number of efforts, including driving from, flying from Arizona to Minot last night, getting a hotel, leaving at six this morning, calling Bo's office to get with him before this started. So I was here at eight o'clock to try and meet and get this handled so we could all resolve this. I don't want a big issue, but I knew that it needs to go to legal, right? And so then we could have resolved all this. And so here's what's gonna happen. I don't want, and this, and now that, you know, it's recorded, that I don't want something happening to these properties while we're this is what I do for a living. So I know that you guys have the ability to, because you've already sold properties after the sale, to sell properties that weren't sold at the sale for the minimum sale price. What I'm telling you, I'm here to do that on those two properties.
So, Mr. Hubbard, I understand where you are coming from.
Okay.
I understand that you called my office. It is unrealistic to expect that I can drop everything to accommodate you on the day of. I have a hundred and fifty other projects I'm working on now. Okay? I can't put you at the front of the line just because you want a meeting.
I, I, I'm not asking you to.
Well, that is what you asked.
Well, it's proven when you're having a meeting about the subject in an hour and a half.
Right.
That that might take precedent over the other thousand things you might have going on.
Unless I'm summoned to that court by a judge, which I was. So at the end of the day, I don't think it would have mattered if it was an hour and a half early or not. It sounds to me like we have deeper legal matters that have to be looked at and accordingly figured out so that this commission can make a proper decision.
I understand.
But we did not sell anything after that night, correct? We haven't sold anything on the list after that night.
So I'm only relying on the next morning when I came in to pay for it. I asked to buy one of the properties and she told me it was already sold, that they had emailed.
I haven't received one yet.
So, so what I'm saying is, upon information believed, I thought you sold it. However, whether you have or haven't, the statute calls for that you have to. You don't get, say no, you have to. It's right here, fifty-seven twenty-eight seventeen.
But we did not, we don't have the money. Just because of email, we still don't have the money.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about any property. I'm saying, I wanna buy it, I wanna be. And so that's all I'm trying to do. I, this is why I don't understand all the hubbub unless people just don't like outsiders coming to their small town. Okay, no, why, why, why do we have friction? The county's not getting hurt.
Mr. Hubbard, if I may, I think there's friction because in our estimation, or my client's estimation, the county, you've come in here and insulted their integrity.
Well, well, integrity?
Correct.
Integrity would mean that they did it on purpose.
You are accusing them and, and saying, and these are your words, that we're going to sell it to somebody else from under you.
No, I'm, I don't, why would I think you were gonna do that?
You said it.
I said, I don't want that to happen.
Right, and it's not.
But we would never do that.
We're not, I, I can't guarantee anything, but my thought would be that Candy and the state's attorney are not going to allow anything to occur until we make sure that this is done correctly.
Do you want me to?
I, I can give you my word, but I'm only here through Sunday. So I'll give you my word, but I know how we operate. They won't allow anything to happen until we get the matter cleared up and make sure that we did, if we didn't do it correctly, that you can come in and buy it at the price that you were prescribing. If not, if we did it correctly under state law, then we will, then the new commission that seats will make that decision.
And I want to also, um, bring up the fact that it's kind of moot whether you did it correctly or not because if I don't sign the contract, it's not sold, right? And I'm here to say I wanna buy it for the minimum bid amount.
So is that equitable to the other person who's bidding on it?
The, I don't know, it's, it's an unqualified bidder.
So if that person were to come in and purchase it while you're sitting in here, is that fair to you?
It's, it's the code, I read the case law. It's what happened.
Sure.
And the Dr. Sheridan. The guy actually gave the down payment like I did, I knew this before I got here, by the way. He gave the down payment, but the problem he didn't do, he didn't ask for the contract for deed. He just said, here, and wanted to come back later. And then when he came back later, they had already sold it to somebody else because the auditor didn't know that the treasurer took the money or something like that. And so the appeals, or the Supreme Court ruled that the second guy got it because he didn't do what he should have done to that, which is why I assured, I made sure I asked for over and over that day because I knew the case law before I got here, that I need to ask for it.
So, Mr. Hubbard, here's what I can offer for you to do, for us to do for you. I can request an attorney general's opinion about the form of our auction.
Okay.
And I can speak with this office of the state tax commissioner and get a prescribed one.
Perfect.
If we did it illegally, we, we won't work our best to rectify it. We don't wanna be, we want to be above board, right? We don't want to do anything incorrectly or illegally. I understand you are saying we've done it incorrectly. I don't know.
Right, and, and along, again, it's a moot point when I just buy the property outright.
But it's not according to you because if you bought the property outright and you weren't qualified and we did our auction wrong, then, then you're not a qualified buyer either.
I am a qualified buyer though. I've signed the tax note, you have it in your possession.
I do not.
Well, they, they have it.
So.
I, I, I think, I, I agree with Paul though. I, I think work with the tax commissioner, date attorney general's position, those properties that you bought will not be touched until we figure out exactly what's occurred.
Okay, perfect.
And then they could be in contact with you to determine that and then at that point, figure out exactly how it's going to be.
And the, and the tax commissioner part, part is for the contract for deed.
Yes.
The document itself.
However, again, I wanna make very clear, I'm trying to buy it under the provision of fifty-seven twenty-seven seventeen right now because there is no sale on the properties.
Yes, and, and if, if we get clarity from the attorney general in that opinion that the sale was moot, as you say.
Correct.
Then at that point, you will be able to buy at that point at that level. Yes. If they say that we handled it correctly, then the sale's price will hold. And then you could work on the contract for deed if you would like, or you could just buy it straight out cash.
And to be, to put one more button on that. In, in the event the county decided, no, we did everything right and this is the contract we're agreeing to and if you don't like it, you don't decide it. But, but I'm going to sign that contract and then we'll just litigate that for damages. So.
That, that is.
One way or the other, I just want to make sure I have all my bases covered. I'm here to pay cash for the prop, property, right? Both of them. If that's not gonna be accepted, then we're gonna wait and hear from the attorney general on whatever. And if we go the route of contract, I still need to look at the actual contract that you guys agree on, right? Send it to me and if a very well, I'm going to sign it. So under no circumstance do I want these properties sold to anybody. However, I want to inform you that the way I read the code and case law, you don't have, if somebody walks in and buys it, you can't tell them no. So I'm telling you, it sounds like you guys say you know who bid on it. If that guy finds out, we're gonna have a quagmire if you don't accept my cash right now. That for one, you've already got fourteen grand of money on your thirteen.
So, so, Mr. Hubbard, it says the county may then sell. So it's the rules of statutory interpretation, may means we can, doesn't mean we must. So I'm just telling you straight out, your interpretation is wrong. We don't have to sell it.
Okay, okay. So you don't want to sell it for the tax?
No. What I'm saying is, he's saying that if somebody walks through the door with ready cash, we don't have.
Just like you read the, the default and missed the last part. What I'm telling you is I have attorneys in Phoenix that have already looked at all of this. They've already looked at the case law. We've already looked at the tax prescribed county deed that you're not using. All you have to do is go to the Recorder Network and there's ninety-two of them. They're all the same, except yours with all this teeth in it.
Nobody's trying to hood you, Mr. Hubbard.
Well, why is the, why is the contract so deepy?
So now the next thing is you go by top rated, do you go by your personal name too?
Top rated business name.
Okay, so in the state of North Dakota, we could go look to see do you owe taxes anywhere else in the state of North Dakota? Because if you do, then you're not a qualified bidder.
I've already signed an oath for you.
But we don't know that.
Okay, well.
You know, we would have to go check that.
Yeah. Sure. I do have, I do have one question. I know that you want to come in here and pay cash today.
Correct.
I'm tracking all that.
Okay.
So why wouldn't you want to come in and pay what you bid on it today? What's the issue behind?
The issue, the issue is unqualified bidders.
So basically, you're saying you bid, you knew this the night of, you bid this six thousand, forty-eight thousand with the intent to come back on us?
No. No.
I think you did.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would have had to make a decision when I drove from Williston to get here within five minutes before. Know that you're not going to do it correctly and then hoodwink you guys. That, or I would have had to have come to a Devil's Lake auction before and saw that you didn't do it wrong. Or have some intel that said you did. What benefit would that have been to me anyway?
I, I don't think it's worth arguing about it, sir. I, I think, I think we have a course of action.
So when can I expect resolution?
That comes down to attorney general's office. I will request the opinion today.
Okay.
As far as when they process it, that's up to them. I have no mechanism to make them.
So what do we do? So I've already changed the locks. I've already got the plumbers in there, uh, into the house. What are we doing with the property? I've asked for.
Technically, you shouldn't have done that until you had paper in your hand.
So remember when we had that conversation? Okay, hold on, hold on. You guys need to hear this. I knew that before I left, which is why I asked for proof of ownership, right? And you told me specifically, I will email you when Adam comes in. You said he was at his farm and he was coming in later that day. You would email me so that I had that. Do you remember that? Okay, but I don't have that, do I? So why am I the bastard in all of this? I've got everything by the, he just accused me of doing this on purpose.
No.
You did. I think you did. You did that for us.
This is my last meeting here, sir. It's my last meeting at the chair and it's my last meeting on this commission. I don't want to have a callous back and forth. We know what the problem is now. The problem has to be rectified. Arguing about it in a public forum isn't gonna fix it. We need an attorney general's opinion. I think that's the thought behind the commission here, correct?
Correct.
To make sure that we are taking action that is prudent, legal, and if we made a mistake, we will rectify a mistake for you. I can't speak for the next commissioners that are gonna sit here. We got one sitting right there. He's listening to the whole conversation, so he's got information too. They will make a prudent decision based off of the attorney general's opinion to make sure that we make the problem or, or fix the problem in a correct way, hopefully that will satisfy both parties.
Okay. To the question about the property.
Yes. So before we get there, let's make a motion that this property will not be sold. I think that's until we get an attorney general's opinion and guidance from the tax commissioner's office. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah, it doesn't, it resolves. That doesn't resolve the, the plumbers in there.
Yep, yep. We gotta, we gotta handle one before we can handle. Okay, we're like, okay, would somebody make that motion that the properties will sit in terms of no sale from the county until we get a resolution from attorney general's opinion as well as other outside information from the tax commissioner's office on the contract for deed portion?
I will.
We have a motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Call the same side. Motion carries. Now, when it comes down to the work being done inside the building, I, I don't know. I can't make a legal description. I, I have no, that would come out useful.
So can you, can you provide us some more information? So you, you started repairs on these properties?
Correct.
Okay, and?
The, the, one of the properties.
Is that the one in town or upstate?
Yeah, in town.
Okay, and your reliance to start doing that was a conversation with the auditor?
Um, no. The reliance is actually case law that says, it's, it's weird. The case law says when you're the high bidder, you've actually purchased the property, paying for it, the whole separate issue. If that makes legal sense to you. Okay, and so, yeah, so technically I bought it and I knew that going into it. That's how they work. However, what I wanted was, and my specific conversation was, hey, if I'm over there doing that and the cops show up or someone calls the cops on me, I've got nothing. I've got a receipt to show the deed and some money, but I've got nothing else. And so that's, I was sitting there trying to get the contract for deed that day for that reason, so I could start this. Because I couldn't, I flew all the way back to Phoenix, expecting to just get all this rectified and then I had to fly up again last night and here we are again. And so now I'm gonna go back down and come back up. But because I'm here now, the plumbers are over there because there's a leak in the thing when you, you guys went and changed the meter for me yesterday. Or not you guys, the, the water department had to go put a new meter on it. And then when they did and turned the water back on, it's flooded.
So, Mr. Hubbard, I, I'm the top law enforcement official in the county. I can talk to the police department and the sheriff's department and let them know that you have specific permission to be there if the county commission agrees to it. You're not gonna be trespassed. I'm not accusing you of anything, but certainly you can't do anything illegal at the property. But, but we're not gonna arrest you for trespassing. I can tell you that for a fact, okay? So that's, that's what I can do to help remedy part two of the issue until we get an answer on part one, okay? We, you, you purchased it, right? Like you said.
Correct.
When you made the bid, you purchased it, paying for it's a separate deal.
Right.
Okay, we need some clarity on that. As far as we're concerned, you are the purchaser at this point.
I, yeah, and I understood that in, in both case law or case law actually to, to.
Sandy, how much money have you received on these two properties? Cash?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, a multiple?
Between the two, between.
A quarter of. So you got forty-seven thousand laying out there yet?
Correct. I don't know if I do that that quick.
Thirty-nine, right.
Yeah, it'd be fifty-two, fifteen, yeah, thirty-nine.
Mr. Hubbard, did you get a receipt of the down payments?
I did.
Okay, so you have a receipt saying we've collected your quarter of down payment.
Correct.
Right. I'm assuming we have a duplicate receipt in the auditor's office.
Right.
Okay. So we gotta see the answer. I, I know it's a big ask, but we're asking you to be patient right now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that everyone understands that. The amount that we're talking about over the minimum bid is not the county's money.
We, we all know that, sir.
Okay, so why is everyone all up in arms?
It's not an up in arms situation. It's a matter of making sure that if it was done incorrectly, we rectify the situation properly.
But, but, but that situation doesn't matter if I come and buy the property today or anybody else would do it.
We realize that, sir. But if, if we're, but if we, if, your opinion is we did it incorrectly. If we did not do it incorrectly and then we turn around and sell it to you for the minimum bid, then we will have all kinds of problems because a auction was held.
Yep. And we have done it incorrectly.
And, and we don't know. That's where we need the opinion.
Okay, well, I guess.
And that's where, that's where I'm coming from. I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but for myself, that's where I'm coming from because we had multiple people bid on the property at an auction. You're saying the auction was not valid, which, okay, let's get an opinion on that. But if it was valid and then we sell it to you for the minimum bid price, then we will have issues, other issues. So let's try to rectify it properly. Get you taken care of, hopefully in a proper manner, that we can get, get it knocked down.
So.
Okay?
I just have one more question, Mr. Hubbard.
Yes.
If I understand correctly, you are offering to come in here, cash on the barrelhead for the owed taxes, but not growing it?
Correct.
Correct.
Unless this, the county can establish and show me the record that there was an, an actual qualified bidder bidding against me, not just somebody running me up.
Then that's where we need the opinion.
Right.
And so, so, yeah, so that, that is my issue. I have no problem. So if, if there was a qualified bidder that ran, that legitimately bid and I just had to pay that, then we would go back to our, our issue would be this document.
And then making sure that the contract for deed was
Correct.
properly functioned under the state, under the tax. And that's where we need a bidding as well.
Right.
Okay. I think we, I think we have a course of action. Do, do, would you like a motion from the board to make sure that? But I mean, you're the law enforcement officer, so if your word is that you're not going to have a problem with it, then you should be okay.
I'll call him, I'll call him today.
Okay.
I'll call the chief of police and sheriff.
Okay. We will, we will get some answers for you.
And, and Bo, I will be here at least for the next four or five hours. I would think because I know it's all new, that we could, you could, we could sit down together and I could show you the case law, show you the specifics, so that you can wrap your head, I mean, we've already done it for weeks. Wrap our head, wrap your head around it.
Sure. I would, I would love to. I have a trial scheduled for tomorrow that I need to give my attention to.
Okay.
If your attorneys have already prepared stuff and, and pulled and drafted the memo, can you have them send it to me? You have my email, Mr. Hubbard.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to review it.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm not trying to take a hard line stance. We want to do it right. That's what we want to do. And if we did it wrong, we want to fix it. That, that's where we're at. We didn't do it wrong.
Oh, well, my.